This is the Thursday, January thirteenth, two thousand and eleven, meeting of the zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Could you call the roll, please?
Joanna Cross. Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Carr.
Here.
Kenneth Burkhart.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Joshua Fink.
Present.
Ann Denny.
Here.
Kate Williams.
Here.
We have, I don't believe we have any minutes for approval tonight, which moves us on to Special Order Business Executive Sessions disclosures. Are there any disclosures to announce? Does not appear we have any disclosures. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have two resolutions for approval. Resolution number two thousand and ten zero three three for case number two thousand and ten one one six and resolution two thousand and ten zero three four for case two thousand and ten one one seven. Has everyone had a chance to review those two resolutions? And could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Thank you, Mr. Vig. You've moved and Mr. Ron, you've seconded. Is there any opposition to approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Moving along, we have no appearance requests, unfinished business, regular agenda. That brings us to our public hearings. We have four cases this evening. Before we go get to our first case, I would like to read the order of business for variance hearings. The Chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record. The Board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The Board shall hear a brief staff presentation outlining the variance, not to exceed ten minutes. On conclusion of the staff presentation, the Board members and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the Chair. The applicant shall give his or her presentation, again, not to exceed ten minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the Board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. On conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the Board members and the staff may then direct questions to the applicant through the Chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Each person has three minutes. All persons who testify may be questioned by the Board, staff, or the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal, three minutes each. The Board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and disposition of the variance. The staff shall reduce the oral findings and conclusions to writing for subsequent adoption by the Board at a later meeting. The matter then rests with the Board and the Chair asks for a positive motion from the Board. In order for a variance to pass, it must be approved by a majority of the fully constituted Board. Fully constituted Board is nine members, so in order for a variance to pass, five votes in favor of the variance are required. That brings us to our first case this evening, case two thousand and eleven zero zero two. The petitioner is Mona Bremont is the petitioner here this evening. She's indicated she's present. Could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property was posted and advertised. Sixty-one public hearing notices were mailed for the case. We received one public hearing notice in opposition to the requested variance.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Would you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a variance from a ten-foot secondary front yard setback to allow an existing carport constructed in two thousand and four to encroach ten feet into the setback. That is a one-hundred percent encroachment and places a corner of the carport on the property line. There is a plan submitted with the building permit from two thousand and four on page three of the package and the as-built that was submitted for the closeout of the permit on page four of the package. So pages three and four, the original plan, page three, the original plan, page four, the as-built. This is a legal and conforming R-two-A lot. However, the lot was platted and the house was built before the zoning regulations were in place. There is overall slope of about fifteen percent on the property. In two thousand and four, the current owner did obtain a permit for a detached carport. The as-built submitted with the application indicates the carport at a legal setback, but when the carport was built, it was discovered to be on the property line in violation of the ten-foot setback, so the owner is now seeking a variance. The lot has two street frontages. Primary frontage is Sixty-third Avenue and has a twenty-foot setback. The secondary frontage, the one affected, is Thurman Drive with a ten-foot setback. All the other lot lines are side yards with five-foot setbacks for this property. For the findings, standard one, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances, the standard is partially met. The property does have two street frontages. The lot was platted and the house was built prior to zoning regulations being in place, and these items have contributed somewhat to leaving limited area for a carport to be built. There does appear to have been adequate area for the carport immediately east to the existing location, and if a carport had been originally anticipated with the house construction back in the nineteen-sixties, we might not be here tonight. We'll get into that with a couple of the other standards. Moving the carport to the east could meet the legal setback, however, there is a retaining wall and landscaping now in the way, and it would also probably require rotating the garage in order to accommodate that footprint. The size of the lot appears to have changed when Thurman Road was constructed. The original plat for the property shows the lot at fifteen thousand four hundred square feet, and current surveys indicate the lot is fourteen thousand three hundred square feet. So I think that could have contributed to a physical issue for the property, but I'm taking that one with a grain of salt because the dimensions of the lot have not changed based on the survey, so there may have been a math error on the original plat indicating fifteen thousand four hundred square feet for the lot. Standard number two, because of the physical circumstances, strict application would deprive the owners of common use enjoyment and create an exceptional or undue hardship. This standard is substantially met. The property apparently has never had either a carport or a garage, and to deny a variance when there are some physical issues on the lot which have placed location problems for the carport, and because carports and garages are common in this neighborhood, it presumably would create a hardship and deprive the applicant of common rights if the variance were denied. Standard three, that the hardship is not self-imposed. This standard is not substantially met. For the first part of this standard, there are some physical problems with the lot as found in standard number one. However, the standard is not substantially met because for the second part of this standard, the owner submitted a building permit plan which indicated the carport at a legal setback. Then when the carport was built, it was built at the property line. The property line and the setback were apparently not properly confirmed during, prior to or during, construction of the carport. Standard four, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. The standard is partially met. There aren't any structural separation issues, no drainage runoff issues. The clear vision area is not impacted. The carport does require a structural approval, inspection, and approval. It has had a structural inspection and approval, but comments from late in December from Building Safety indicate that they think something is still wrong with the structure. It's not really an issue for the variance, as the variance is largely a yard setback and it's not adjacent to other homes. It is something the owners will have to resolve in terms of bracing, beefing up the construction, whatever it is, Building Safety thinks is wrong, if that does turn out to be the fact. This is not a done deal from Building Safety. They just have some concerns. They want another look at it. Excuse me. Standard number five, that the variance, if granted, is in keeping with the intent of the code. The standard is substantially met. This is dimensional. Carports and garages are common in the district, and the addition of this one would not change the character of the zoning district. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not affect the wider area of the people, of municipality, of Anchorage in terms of health, safety, and welfare. As in standard four, this standard is partially met. The carport does need a structural inspection, and Building Safety will resolve this with the owner. Standard seven, the variance granted is the minimum variance for a reasonable use of the land. The standard is not substantially met. The encroachment has been in place since two thousand and four, but it appears the carport could have been built as a single-vehicle-wide carport at approximately fourteen feet instead of a double-wide at twenty-four feet, and in those ten feet would meet the setback. It also appears that if the construction had been anticipated in nineteen ninety-nine, the construction of the carport had been anticipated in nineteen ninety-nine, when the yard work and retaining walls were being put in, the carport could have been relocated to meet, to the east, to meet the legal setback. As standards three and seven are not substantially met, the Department recommends denial on the request. There are four conditions on pages nine and ten, should the Board find for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there any questions of staff by the Board? Mr. Vig.
Mr. Barrett, in your analysis, or the analysis in the packet, mentioned that the carport could have been potentially located further east on the lot, and then the access would come from a ninety-degree different orientation from what's there now. Is that right?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, yes, essentially, that's correct. If you take a look at the plan submitted for the building permit, the drawing on page three, back from two thousand and four, the garage at that time, and there would have been additional excavating and grading required, but the garage could have been moved to the east so that it is more in front of the house. The driveway could have stayed where it is, but it might have been necessary to rotate the garage ninety degrees, and I'm saying that just because of the type of carport it is and how it's oriented currently. There might have been other ways to do it, but what I was getting at is, worst case, the garage would have been moved to the east, rotated ninety degrees to the left. Cars would still use the same driveway, but then they'd be turning in and parked in parallel to the front of the house instead of perpendicular.
Okay, so it wasn't intended that the access would have come off Thurman, but it would still continue to come off Gulch?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, that's correct. In this case, because of a buffer along the side of the property adjacent to Thurman, access on this property could only ever come from Gulch.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Are there any other questions of staff by the Board? Mr. Barrett, I do have one question. We have on page twenty-three and twenty-four of our packet, a memo from Ron Wild to Angela And they typically submit a letter or their comment separately. This seemed to be a different, coming a different format in our packet than what I've seen in the past, comments from other municipal departments. Do you have any knowledge of the purpose of this memo?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I've spoken with Mr. Wild about it several times. The format's slightly different, one, because Mr. Wild is new at this. Secondly, he's not really addressing the variance standards. He's talking about a structural inspection issue, so he was trying to be a little more thorough in his description of the construction and the history of the construction.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the Board, or of staff by the Board? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? And could you state and spell your name for the record?
Thank you. My name is Mona Bremont. I'm sorry, did you want to spell also?
Yes.
Sorry. M-O-N-A-B-R-E-M-O-N-T.
Thank you, Ms. Bremont. As I stated earlier, you have ten minutes for your presentation, and we must find that all seven standards are met in order to grant a variance, so if your presentation could be, could address the seven standards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As for standard one, Lot eighteen is in a regular-shaped lot that has substantial increasing slopes from the north to south area of the lot, and the steep slopes impacted approximately eighty-five percent of the land, and that is why the current location was selected for the carport. On standard number two, in some areas of the lot, the grade is approximately thirty percent, and the site location of the carport is fairly level, and it required the least amount of digging and dirt work to construct the carport at that location. This is the only covered carport or garage currently on this property. For standard number three, the original design and site location of the carport on Lot eighteen was drawn on the original as-built. The design at that time met all zoning requirements. The contractor constructed the carport close to the original design specifications. I think there was a little bit of the width on the carport changed slightly. However, the carport was built on the site location that caused it to be too close to the property line. Removing the encroachment would render the structure unusable. On standard number four, the property line on the west side of Lot eighteen abuts to a wooded area the municipality currently owns, and this is alongside the low-traffic area on Thurman. The variance, if approved, will not increase traffic or place the public, or place the public health, safety, or welfare at risk. The encroachment is not visibly evident, and there have been no registered complaints at this time. No code enforcement actions have occurred. As for standard number five, the land use on the wooded area on the west side of the lot will not change as a result of approval of this variance. Standard number six, the variance, if approved, will not alter the fire department's safety standards, traffic, clear vision areas, Department of Health, and Human Services standards for air or water quality or noise levels. And standard number seven, the carport on this lot is a quality-built structure that is attractive in the surrounding neighborhood, and approved variance would allow the carport to remain in place and be functional for many years. Again, Lot eighteen has no other protective parking structures, no other garages or carport, and moving or altering this structure would be extremely costly and could compromise the integrity of the structure. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bremont. Are there questions of the applicant by the Board? Anyone at all? Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Bremont, a question about the slope you mentioned on the lot. There is a topo in our packet. I've lost the page. I think it may be seventeen or so. In looking at that, it does look like the lot is slope-affected, but the front portion of the lot where the carport is located, can you describe the slope on the front portion of the lot? Is it sloped? Is it flat east and west along that front property line?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Ron. The front part of the property, it is fairly steep. It's definitely on a hill, and there are several very large birch trees. I considered that as an option to put the carport there originally, and I opted not to do that because it would take away the majority of the front yard, plus the several, the cost of removing several very large trees, and then there would have to be a rather large retaining wall built on that area to keep all the dirt back there. So the slope of that front yard is substantial. It's probably, that's probably the steepest part of the yard was in the front. And then there was also a twenty-foot setback also, that I'd have to go back twenty foot, and it would pretty much take out the whole, the front yard.
Thank you. Mr. Burkhart.
Yes, I don't understand your response to standard number three, that you mentioned that the carport was built essentially to specifications, but the site plan that was submitted and approved by the municipality had the carport twelve feet off the property line, and a twelve-feet error is a large error. So I guess, can you explain that further?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Burkhart. The original plans, the on the as-built show that the carport was to be constructed twelve feet from the property line, and during that construction phase, the contractor didn't place the structure twelve feet from the property line, and I did not realize that he had placed that structure too close onto the property line. And several years had passed, and I did not even know it until I wanted to go close this permit in two thousand and ten, that I realized with the as, with the current as-built, that the carport was built almost directly on the property line.
Yeah, I guess we have that in page three of our packet, and it appears that there never was a chance for this to be able to fit where you planned it, though, that there's a twenty-four-foot dimension of the carport in, from side to side, and twenty-eight next to it in width, and the twenty-four foot is not even close to the length of the twenty-eight foot line, so it appears to me that this never had a chance to be built in a conforming location, and standard number three indicates that this hardship isn't self-imposed. We have to find that the hardship isn't self-imposed, but it seems clear to me, unless you're able to convince me otherwise, that it should have been obvious to both you and the contractor that these numbers had no way of adding up to provide, it almost, you know, I don't think it was willful in any manner, but it seems very, very obvious, you know, to me that things weren't scaled properly, and if you're going to go ahead and build a carport, that either you or your contractor should have verified the distance to the property line.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Burkhart. I think the, at the original time, when the contractor came out to place the carport, there's a buffer between the property line and Thurman, and it's about fifteen feet. It's a wooded area, and I think what happened was that the contractor probably used that whole buffer as being part of the Lot eighteen property line, and that's probably where a lot of the error came from, and that's not the property line, that tree buffer that the municipality owns is not part of Lot eighteen. It was several years ago, back in the sixties, I believe, when the, before they changed the lot size, but that property is not part of Lot eighteen, and I think that's where a lot of the error came from, is the contractor probably miscalculated that, and it is, it was an error of the contractor and ultimately me that the carport was placed incorrectly.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant by the Board? Does staff have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. A comment, though, in regard to one of Mr. Burkhart's first questions. I believe I heard the statement regarding the drawing on page three, that in the plan, the carport was shown at twelve feet from the property line. The twelve-foot measurement shown on the plan, on the permit application plan, that twelve-foot dimension from the carport to the line to the west is actually to a power line that's no longer there. The property line is about another twelve feet further to the west from that. I just thought I heard a wrong dimension mentioned, wrong dimension mentioned, and wanted to make certain. Thank you.
You have no further questions, Mr. Barrett? Okay. Do you have any questions of the staff, Ms. Bremont?
No, sir.
Okay. If you'll have a seat, we will open this up for the public testimony, the public hearing. The public hearing in case two thousand and eleven zero zero two is now open. Anyone wishing to testify can come forward? Anyone at all? If you could state and spell your name for the record, please?
Lawrence Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. You have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, I'm not up on all these regulations. My wife and I are the new owners of this home, and the only thing I wanted to mention is, the one statement, I think there was a complaint issued there regarding visibility, and the stop sign that is at the end of Thurman Street is about roughly twenty-five or thirty feet from the closest point of the carport, and so therefore, I'd hope that you would take into account that there is definitely clear visibility and no chance of any danger to the public. That's the only comment I had.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. That's the stop sign for traffic on Thurman Drive?
On Thurman, correct.
Okay. And how far did you say that was?
I'm just estimating about twenty-five or thirty feet. I saw a measurement of, I think, thirty-point-five feet on one of the state-stamped as-bills or maps or whatever it was.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Austin? Mr. Burkhart.
So you're the current owner of the property?
Yeah, we just purchased the property about a month ago.
Do you have any plans to enclose the carport and create a garage out of it?
Excuse me. No, in fact, my wife is happy, actually, believe it or not, that we only have a carport, because if it were a garage, I would fill it with stuff. So, no, we don't, and we're very pleased with the improvements that have been made on the property. It's a very nice home. Mrs. Bremont has done a lot through the years, and so that's the reason why we bought it, in part, in great part, due to the attractive and sturdy carport.
If, I guess I have a hypothetical question for you. If the, if the Board, as one of their requirements for approving the variance, put the stipulation that the carport would not be in the future enclosed into a garage, would you have any...
No, not at all. We were actually discussing that. We would be happy to agree to that in writing or in any form.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of Mr. Austin by the Board? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bremont, do you have any rebuttal?
No.
She's indicated that she does not have any. With that, the matter rests with the Board. And in case two thousand and eleven zero zero two, could I have a positive motion from a Board member, please? And in case 2011-002, could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? Mr. Burkhardt?
Yes, in, uh, case 2011-002, I move we grant a variance in the R2A district, a variance from AMC 21.40.040, which requires a 10-foot secondary front yard setback to allow an existing carport constructed in 2004 to encroach 10 feet into the setback, 100% encroachment, subject to Department recommendations, one through four on nine and 10 of the packet, and adding an additional requirement number five, that, uh, for the variance to be, um, effective, um, the carport shall remain in its present state as a, a carport and not in the future be, um, converted into a garage.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Um, Mr. Vig, you've indicated you would second, be the second?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Mr. Burkhardt, would you speak to your motion, please?
Um, as far as standard number one is concerned, um, I do, do believe that standard one is met. Um, the lot is slope affected. I think one of the significant features here, um, is to the, uh, the west of the property, uh, the method in which, um, Thurman, um, Road approaches Jewel Lake is from a very, um, acute angle. And basically, you have two right-of-ways that are layered, one over one another in essentially parallel condition. Um, I think that's quite unusual. Um, I think standard, uh, two is met. Um, um, I agree with staff in their analysis. Uh, standard three is, is the, um, a tough condition, and I've been wrestling with that. I'd be interested to hear from additional board members. I think the hardship, um, is self-imposed in the sense that, um, I think there's difficulty in terms of, um, the sketching that was done on the ASBILT, um, and indicating the, the 12-foot, um, distance between the carport. Um, I don't physically think that that was really available. It's not the, uh, carport isn't drawn to scale. And so I think there's some culpability there. Um, but I don't think it, um, the circumstances arise from, um, merely inconvenience. I think this was, um, an honest mistake. Um, we also have a homeowner dealing with, um, a contractor. There may have been miscommunication there. Um, they might have measured directly off of the, um, the house. Um, it sounds like, um, they may not have ever had a, a surveyor involved. So, um, I guess I'm having some difficulty with standard three, but I'm inclined to give them the benefit of the doubt for the moment here. Um, I believe standard four is met. Um, the adjacent property here is that, that right-of-way. Um, and so the apparent distance from the carport to Jewel Lake is actually quite substantial when you layer on the Thurman Road right-of-way onto Jewel Lake. So I don't think this is going to be visually apparent. Um, the, the current owner of the property, um, not objecting to, um, an additional condition that the carport remain, um, open and enclosed as it is today, I think, um, is good in that, um, a, a structure with walls and enclosed garage would have more of a visual impact. Um, standard five is met. This isn't a use variance. Um, standard six, I think, is, um, essentially met with the, um, the existing vegetation that occurs in that area and the carport being open. Um, I don't think the, um, the setback violation is particularly noticeable. Um, standard number seven, I guess, is another one that I'm, I'm wrestling with, um, in terms of the variance being the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. I think there are conforming locations, um, that would allow a carport or garage to be installed. Um, but those would, um, require, if the carport is moved over, um, taking down a couple of mature trees. Um, I don't think, um, in terms of the attractiveness of the property, um, the, the existing mature trees, that, that necessarily serves the, the interest of the public, um, in this part. So, I guess I'm, I'm tentatively, this is kinda like a borderline call for me, but I, I think I'm gonna vote in favor. But I'd like to hear the opinions of other board members.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Mr. Vig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I concur with Mr. Burkhardt's comments on regard to standards one and two, um, that they're, that they're met. Um, I was thinking about, um, standard number three and Mr. Barrett pointing out that on page three of the packet, that the offset to the, to the carport was measured from a, a power line that no longer exists. And, um, I have to conclude that the power line must have been removed prior to construction of the carport, uh, or it wouldn't have been able to physically be there. And that, I think it was an honest mistake that, uh, caused the carport to be mislocated because of the fact of the, of the power line being, the point of reference that had been used to sketch out the location no longer being there to serve as a point of reference. Um, with regard to standards, uh, four and five, I agree with Mr. Burkhardt's analysis on those, uh, as well as standard, uh, six. On standard seven, it, whether or not it's a minimum variance that will make possibly reasonable use of the land, that is a, um, more difficult one. But, uh, if, if the carport were to be located in a different place on the lot, I think some of the other reasonable uses of the land would be negatively impacted. And so, um, I could see that all, all other things taken into consideration, that this may be the, uh, minimum variance that makes use, uh, reasonable use of the land and the fact that, uh, it provided a two-car carport and other amenities such as vegetation and landscaping that are desirable in, in this kind of a neighborhood. So, I, uh, I believe that standard seven is met from that standpoint and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vig. Are there, uh, other comments by board members? Any other board member comments? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, request some clarification from fellow board members as to, um, our course of action if we approve this variance request. And building safety says the carport must be fully reconstructed in its current location. So then, in effect, we'd be granting a carport, not necessarily this carport, but one of the same, of the same dimensions in its existing location. Is that correct?
Mr. Barrett indicating a shake, a nod of his head.
Mr. Chairman, yes. The way the conditions are worded, if building safety may, uh, require this one to be taken down, a replacement to their satisfaction would still have to meet the conditions and essentially as shown on the ASBILT. Same dimensions, same footprint.
Thank you. That answered your question, Mr. Ron?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Are there any other comments from board members? Um, I, I actually do not intend to support the motion. Um, the, the findings for standards three and seven that, that Mr. Burkhardt wrestled with, I, um, I don't find those are met. Um, I think that this is a self-imposed hardship. Um, I think a survey would have located the carport. Um, it's, it's a very nice-looking carport. The landscaping's very nice. Um, however, it, it appears to me they were trying to maximize the use of the yard, um, by pushing that carport as far to the property line as they could. Um, and, um, for that reason, I don't find that standard, standard seven, uh, this being the minimum variance granted. Um, I think that they could have put the carport in a conforming location. So I don't find that standards three or seven are met, and I do not intend to support the motion. Um, with that, please vote if there are no other comments. That motion passes by a vote of six to one. Um, I should read for the record, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, "It is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court." That brings us to our next case, 2011-005. The petitioner is Daniel in Folvia Low. Are the petitioners here? Have indicated they are present. Could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice?
On December 22nd, 2010, there were 39 public hearing notices mailed. As of this writing, um, the writing of this case, there were, uh, no responses received from the public. Also, the Rabbit Creek Community Council, um, did not comment, and there are no late comments, uh, that came in today or in the last week on this case.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Will you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, page seven of the packet, um, is, uh, that shows the, the, um, subject parcel and the proposed, um, the, the variance request. On page seven, um, you can see that it's a very large lot, 86,000 square feet. Um, the, uh, the, the dimensions of the house and the carport are there, um, close to England Circle. So, um, you can see the, the cul-de-sac and then, uh, the, uh, the house and the carport. The, uh, carport is actually, uh, so, nothing is built on this site. It's a vacant undeveloped, uh, lot. Um, the petitioner is requesting a variance to be able to build, um, his, uh, his home and, uh, and instead of a carport, he, well, intends to build a carport to start and then to enclose it, uh, to become a garage, um, in, sometime in the future. Um, so this, uh, variance request, he wants to go for the full, you know, uh, get permission for, for a full garage, um, even though he may just begin with a carport. Um, there's a dotted line, um, on this, um, site plan or ASBILT, uh, proposed ASBILT, um, to show, uh, I'm sorry, it's a proposed construction scheme, um, to show, uh, that, that dimension, um, I'm sorry, the dotted line shows the, uh, approximate, uh, location of the, of the, the bluff. And you can see that that's about 75 feet back from, um, the edge of the right-of-way, the edge of the, the cul-de-sac, uh, the front, uh, lot line there. Um, that, because this is an R6 district and the front yard setback, uh, front yard required setback is 50 feet, that leaves about 25 feet of, uh, buildable area, um, for a house, a garage, anything. Um, so your point of reference here is, uh, the front lot line, which is England, England Circle, a road that's not constructed. Um, well, it's under snow right now. I, I couldn't quite tell, but I doubt that it's, uh, any more than, uh, strip paved at, at best. Um, so, uh, the next, uh, thing in the packet that I, next page in the packet I'd like to point out is page 11. Um, and on page 11, if you look from England Circle being your point of reference, um, and you look at the topography, you can see that, um, the, the majority or the, the vast, uh, the majority of the, of, of the lot is steeply sloped. Um, and, uh, the area where you don't see the contour lines, that's the, the buildable area, and, uh, most of that is within that 50-foot front yard setback. Um, finally, um, uh, for, for reference, um, page 35 of your packet, um, staff went out and took, took our own photos, uh, of the site. Petitioner provided photos also, but, um, these are just supplemental photos that staff took. And on page 34 and 35, on page 34, that's just, you know, one edge of the slope and then, um, uh, and then the, the staff person walked to the other side and just took a picture back. So it's just sort of one from east and one from west, but, um, it's the, it's a photo of the same bank. And then, uh, page 35 is from across the, the other side of the gorge, um, or the, the valley there, um, looking back. And you can see a, I believe it's a yurt, um, um, up on the hill. That's the, that's the, the petition site. Okay. Um, the petitioner is requesting a variance from minimum yard requirements to allow a house and garage to encroach 40, 40 feet, 80% into the 50-foot front yard setback. The property is currently undeveloped. The owner would like to build a 2,900-square-foot, single-family house and attached garage, um, on the lot. The lot is affected by extremely steep, uh, slope over most of the lot. Um, the only suitable building location is within the, the front yard setback. The house will be served by a private well and onsite septic system because public facilities are not available. Um, the R10, um, district is intended for residential, uh, lots with severely slope, uh, severe slopes, uh, such as this petition site. The R10 district has no front yard setback requirement. Um, in this case, however, the petition site is, uh, zoned R6, which requires the 50-foot front yard setback. Um, in, for standard number one, um, the, the division believes that the standard is met. Um, there is a, a cliff that begins approximately, um, 75 feet from the front lot line. Um, this is a physical impediment to construction of a house and garage on the property. The cliff does not affect the other properties in the neighborhood as severely as it affects this particular property. It's because there's kind of a, uh, the way the, this lot was platted and the fact that this is kind of a knoll, um, it's interesting, the, the neighboring lots on either side, um, have, have buildable areas, whereas this lot does not. It's just, uh, special to this lot. Um, standard number two is met. Um, the need for the variance arises from the, the cliff. Um, the R6 district requires a 50-foot front yard setback. Without a variance for the house and garage, the owner would have to build a smaller house without a garage. The proposed, um, 20,000-square-foot house and 900-square-foot garage are, um, of similar size compared to, uh, neighboring houses and garages in the area. According to the proposed site plan, the garage would encroach 40 feet, uh, 80%, and the house would encroach 10 feet into the 50-foot front yard setback. Uh, staff just wanted to point that out, break them out separately so that you knew how much, you know, the garage encroaches and how much the house encroaches. Um, the, um, uh, standard number three, um, staff believes, uh, standard number three is met. Uh, the peculiarity, um, of the lot arises from the extremely steep slope, which takes up most of the lot. The slope of the lot and the physical condition of the land is not self-imposed. Um, the need for the variance is a result of the petitioner's desire to build a modest-sized house and garage on the lot. Uh, standard number four is met. The variance will not adversely affect the, um, use of adjacent property because the variances are not, uh, for front yard setback encroachments and, uh, I'm sorry, um, are for front yard, uh, for a front yard setback encroachment, not for side yard encroachments. Um, the front yard encroachment would bring the house closer to the street, but the built street, um, is further away from the, the lot line, the garage. Uh, even with the 40-foot front yard encroachment, um, would still be approximately 50 feet from the actual built street. Uh, fire engine access and, uh, site drainage are not issues in this case. Standard number five is met. The requested variance is dimensional and not a use variance. The house and garage encroach into the front yard setback, but it does not change the character of the zoning district. Standard number six is met. Um, the house, um, and garage will not cause a fire separation distance concern. Um, the encroachment will not obstruct clear vision triangles because it's not a corner lot. Um, no objections have been received from the public or from reviewing agencies. Um, the department, I'm sorry, the division believes that standard number seven is also met. Uh, presently, the lot is vacant and undeveloped. Um, the department finds, the division finds that, uh, this 2,900-square-foot house and garage is of average size for this neighborhood, and therefore the requested encroachment is the, the minimum needed for a reasonable use of the land. is the minimum needed for reasonable use of the land. Therefore, the department recommends approval of the variance, subject to conditions one and two on page six of the packet. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McGlaughlin. Are there any questions of the board by, or of staff by the board? Mr. Burkhart.
Are the lots on either side of this lot developed yet?
The lots, if you look at page seven of the packet, I believe that lot twenty-six and twenty-seven are developed. I'm not, I can't recall if lot twenty-four is developed. I direct that question, if you could ask that question to the petitioner.
Okay. Are there any of the questions of staff? Seeing none, could the applicant come forward, please? And state and spell your names for the record.
Fulvia Low, F-U-L-V-I-A-L-O-W-E.
Good evening. Dan Low, D-A-N-L-O-W-E.
Thank you, and you have ten minutes for your presentation.
Thank you. Regarding standard number one, the extraordinary circumstances is that ninety-five percent of the lot is steeper than forty percent. There is also utility encroaching into the five thousand square foot flat buildable space, and the cul-de-sac is also encroaching into that five thousand square foot flat buildable space. As far as standard number two, the physical features of the lot limit the location and the option of where we can build our home on the flat space. And to the lot to the right, which is lot twenty-six, it's not developed, and the lot to the left, which is lot twenty-four, is also not developed at this time. Regarding standard number three, the spatial conditions and circumstances are more than inconvenience and a financial burden because we don't, we did not create the slope, we did not plot the cul-de-sac and the right-of-way, and it would limit the location of the home on the flat buildable space. As far as standard number four, if the variance is granted, it will not negatively affect our neighbors, and it will not provide privileges above our neighbors. In fact, the development of our lot would increase the property values of our, of our neighbors. As far as standard number five, let me know if I'm missing anything.
Number four is just, number four, just the adjacent properties, we're applying simply just for the front yard setback.
As far as standard number five, the land use will not change because we're requesting the variance. We're still applying to build a single-family dwelling home in, on lot twenty?
Five.
On lot twenty-five. As far as standard number six, the variance will not affect the health, safety, and welfare of our neighbors and the people of the municipality. And as far as standard number six, because of the extraordinary physical features of the lot, where ninety-five percent of it is, oh, I'm sorry, is number seven? Because the extraordinary physical features of the lot, where ninety-five percent of the two acres are steep slope, by having the variance granted, it would allow us to build a moderately sized home on the flat buildable space, and furthermore, it will relieve the financial burden of building if the grant, if the variance wasn't granted. It would relieve the financial burden of building on a slope, which it would, well, we've already designed, we have designed a house to fit on the flat, and if the house is also designed to deal with the wind, and, because it is a high-wind area, so the house is not just a house, it's a house to work because of the location where it would be built. And, am I missing anything? Sorry, we're working as a team.
In regards to the minimum variance, basically, we're just designed a house to utilize the most of the flat buildable space as possible. We want to stick with standard building methods for cost, basically, to fit our budget. Simply just going with the best practical use of the land, and just a standard moderate-sized home, so. Couple key points is, the house was custom-designed to fit on that lot, and the roof is designed to deflect the wind because we are in a high-wind area. And just another point, and the well and septic has been approved by the municipality for this site as well, so.
And we have the paperwork if you need it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board, applicants? Mr. Vig.
Yes, I'm wondering about the flat spot. Was it, was it a constructed fill that leveled an area out there that allowed you to have a flat spot to build on? Was it an existing topographic feature? Can you tell us about that?
Well, I'll try to answer. If I don't answer completely, he will step in. But last year, we got a permit from the muni to
Filling grade permit.
To fill, to get a filling grade permit to level what was able to be leveled, and so that we could get an idea how much flat is there, and then from there, started working on, can we fit a house, septic, and a well, and the alternative well location, correct?
Yeah, through the septic side.
Yeah, through the septic side. So it wasn't flat, to answer your question, it wasn't flat.
Okay, so, to help, to help us understand about how it might relate to standard seven, for example, about a minimum variance, is there construction reasons or other reasons why that, that fill couldn't have been extended further to allow that flat spot to be large enough and allow you to build outside of the setback?
Yeah, there's no ability to retain the dirt to grow the flat spots out onto the bluff. Essentially, what we did is we took a natural six-foot rise on the lot, cut the lot flat, and shoved the soil over and have retained it in the place where it sits now. And we tried to meet the two-to-one slope standard. So we're right within that. So any ability to grow the flat buildable space, we would have to come up with some exorbitant type of retaining wall, which would be excessive for a slope at forty degrees, I would think.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, does staff have any questions of the?
No, Mr. Chair.
Does the applicant have any questions of staff?
No.
No.
With that, we'll open the hearing up for public testimony.
I guess one question, did you want a copy of the well and septic permit as an exhibit?
If you'd like to submit it, we'll have to keep it for thirty days for the record.
It's just a copy. You might have it at the muni, but I'd be glad to provide it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we'll open the hearing up for public testimony. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chair.
Does the petitioner have any further rebuttal? They've indicated they do not. With that, the matter rests with the board in case two thousand eleven dash zero zero five. Could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? Ms. Williams.
Yes.
You've indicated you would make the motion.
Mm-hmm. In case number two thousand eleven zero zero five, a move we grant a variance from AMC twenty-one dot four zero dot zero eight zero dot G one, to allow a house and garage to encroach forty feet, or eighty percent, into the fifty-foot front yard setback, subject to conditions one and two on page six of the packet.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Denny, you've indicated you would second that motion?
That is correct.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Ms. Williams, will you speak to your motion, please?
Yes. I agree with staff that standard one is substantially met because the lot is so steeply slope affected, I believe they said ninety-five percent of it is forty percent or more. For the same reason, I believe standard two is substantially met as well. Because of the, how slope affected the lot is, strict application of the code would create an undue hardship as far as the available area for building, which I believe was just twenty-five feet. And it would prevent them from having a size of house and a garage as other property owners in the area are able to do. I also believe that standard three is substantially met because the steep slope was not caused, obviously, by the petitioners. And again, the need for the variance is a result of their, their desire to build a house that other property owners in the neighborhood can, can build. Standard four, I believe, is substantially met as well. There will be no adverse effects to adjacent property owners. I'll just highlight one of the points that the staff brought up, that the garage, even with a forty-foot front yard encroachment, would still be about fifty feet from, from the street. I believe that standard five is substantially met. The variance is a dimensional and not a use variance. Standard six is also substantially met, I believe. No one from the public and none of the reviewing agencies had any objections to this variance. And standard seven, I believe, is substantially met as well, because the house is a modest size, and it's in line with what other property owners in the neighborhood have been able to build. And so for those reasons, I intend to support this variance request.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Denny.
Yes, I agree with Ms. Williams and with staff in that all of the standards have been substantially met, and that this is the minimum variance that will allow the couple to have a reasonable-sized home on the property.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Burkhart.
I also intend to support the variance request. I do want to caution the owners, though, that for the west property line, the setback there is twenty-five feet, and as it's drawn right now, you have twenty-five feet, zero inches, and no room for any construction tolerance. So make sure you know where your property line is. And the other comment I would have, in terms of looking at the floor plan on page, let's see, page thirty, it appears there is a deck on that side of the building, that the way the city measures encroachments, that anything that's thirty inches above the level of the land would be basically part of your building area or an encroachment if something's less than thirty inches down to grade, and since your slope falls away, what you have drawn here is likely an encroachment into that twenty-five feet. So I strongly caution you to, to review the encroachment requirements when you go in for a building permit, and if your variance is passed today, hopefully, you won't be back here again after you're getting, trying to get your as-built.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Are there any other comments from board members? Anyone at all? That motion passes by a vote of seven to zero, so that variance is granted. Again, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. That brings us to our next case, two thousand eleven zero zero three. The petitioner is Sue Lovkin. Is the petitioner here this evening? I'm sorry, she's indicated, present. Could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property was signed and posted. Seventy-seven public hearing notices were mailed out for this application. We received two comments in opposition. We received one comment sort of in opposition. It expressed concern with the clear vision area. However, the fence as proposed in this case is clear of the clear vision area. We did not receive any community council comments, nor did we receive any comments from the homeowners association, but the homeowners association sent over a copy of their regulations, which mirror the municipal requirements for fence heights and yard setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Will you proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request is to allow a six-foot-tall fence to be located at approximately the lot line, where the code requires either the fence be four foot tall if at the lot line, or be located ten feet back from the lot line, which in this case is a secondary front yard. Mr. McGlaughlin is passing out some photographs to you. The snapshots were supplied by Ms. Lovkin to show some comparable fences in the neighborhood. The eight-and-a-half-by-eleven pictures are from Google Earth, and I've supplied those so that you can see the property without snow on it, because otherwise, you cannot distinguish the edge of the road or the sidewalk. The house plan for construction back in April of two thousand and ten is on page three of the package. The as-built after construction is shown on page four of the package, and on page five is the as-built with the fence location, as Ms. Lovkin would like it superimposed, so you can see the locations where it is on the property line. If you would take a quick look at the as, at the proposal on page five, I just want to point something out. Turn the page sideways so that north is to the top. You'll see in the upper right-hand corner of the property at the edge of the ten-foot easement, the inside edge of the ten-foot easement, there's a small circle with a dashed line around it. That's a fire hydrant. What Ms. Lovkin is attempting to demonstrate there is that the fence will be located inside of the fire hydrant, which is a fire department requirement, and we'll get to that in a moment. This is a legal-conforming lot. It has two street frontages. Yukon Charlie Loop is the primary front yard and has a twenty-foot setback. West Park Drive is the secondary front yard and has a ten-foot setback. The other yards are side yards and have a five-foot setback. The lot is level. There is a ten-foot-wide electric easement along West Park. The lot is triangular shaped, but it is approximately ninety-seven hundred square feet in size. There do not appear to be serious impediments to development of the property. The applicant has built a relatively large home on the lot in relation to the lot size and home and lot sizes within the immediate neighborhood. Placement of the house is what's causing the problem, given the triangular shape of the lot and a minimum-sized backyard. The fence as proposed is not in the clear vision area. There is required landscaping, and as I mentioned, there is a fire hydrant in the general area of the fence. Neither the landscaping nor the hydrant are shown on an actual as-built, so if the variance is approved, we're going to ask for a new as-built showing the proposed fence. is approved, we're going to ask for a new as-built showing the proposed fence and landscaping and hydrant. Regarding the standards, number one, that there exist exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances. The standard's partially met, as we usually consider with a fence. Dual frontages do propose somewhat of a problem. The lot is a triangular shape. If the fence is at the legal setback, there is a very small rear yard. However, if there had been some thought given to a fence at the time of the lot purchase and the house construction, it might have been possible to either reduce the size of the house footprint slightly, or reorient the house slightly in order to accommodate a six-foot fence at a legal setback. There are other fences in the neighborhood. There are a couple that are over the four-foot height limit, however, they are set back to the ten-foot lot line. There is another fence over six feet, about a block and a half away. It is within the encroachment area and is illegal under the current code. So we did note other fences over height in the area, however, they meet the setback. We did also note one other over height fence that is illegal. Standard number two, because of the physical circumstances, the strict application of this code would create an exceptional or undue hardship. Again, the standard is partially met. The physical circumstances of standard number one are not fully met. The need for the fence is related to medical reasons and privacy. Nevertheless, it does appear that a legal fence need be back only ten feet from the property line, and if the fence had been incorporated in the site design from the beginning, the house footprint could have been modified to accommodate the fence at the setback. A fence at the legal setback will noticeably reduce the size of the usable yard, but it still does allow an overall reasonable use of the property. Regarding standard number three, that the hardship is not self-imposed, this standard is not substantially met. For the first part of this standard, the physical problems with the land are only partially met, and the fence height restriction and the yard setbacks have been in the zoning code since 1969. When the house was built in 2010, the owner apparently made no allowance for fences when citing the house footprint. And for the second part of that standard, the owners did not plat or rezone the property, but they did cite and build the house. The house could have been designed with a smaller footprint or oriented differently to allow for a legal fence if it had been anticipated, if the fence had been anticipated at that time. Standard four, the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. The standard is partially met. There are no structural separation issues. Drainage and runoff are not an issue. Street maintenance and snow removal have indicated the fence location is not a problem for them, and the clear vision area is not affected. The applicant is advised that she will need to contact utility companies for utility line locates and letters of no objection prior to installing the fence, and she will need to include in that request the existing deck, which slightly encroaches into the easement. The applicant has stated that the fence will not interfere with the fire hydrant on the north end of the property. Fire hydrants need to be outside the fence and have three feet of clearance on all sides. The site plan for Kincaid Estates subdivision, of which this development is part, all have a landscaping requirement along West Park Drive, so we are asking for an updated as-built to verify that once the fence is installed, if the variance is approved, that the required landscaping will not be affected. As I mentioned, three negative responses from the public were received, but only two are valid because one was concerned with the clear vision, trying, the clear vision area, which is not affected. The homeowners' association did send their documents indicating what the legal requirement for fences and setbacks are. Excuse me. Standard five, that the variance granted is in keeping with the intent of the code. This standard is partially met. The requested variance is dimensional. It is not a use variance. These fences are permitted. However, a portion of the code and the reason for not allowing tall fences along right-of-way is to prevent a walled-in appearance. By itself, this house and fence would probably not present that walled-in appearance. However, there is a definite possibility that if everyone begins doing it, we would definitely have that walled-in appearance along West Park Drive. Standard six, the variance, if granted, does not adversely affect the wider area, health, safety, and welfare of the municipality. The standard is substantially met. No area-wide impacts have been identified. And standard seven, that the variance granted is a minimum variance to make possible a reasonable use of the land. The standard's not substantially met. Fence is a highly desirable item, but the fence as proposed would be near the edge of the sidewalk, probably within about five feet. It appears the fence could be set back somewhat, or even at the full ten feet, to meet the standard, without truly affecting a reasonable use of the property. And at a minimum, the fence should be located inside the required landscaping. As standards three and seven are not substantially met, the department recommends denial. However, there are five conditions on pages eleven and twelve, should the board find for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Are there questions of staff by the board members? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barrett, what is the intent of that required landscaping that's required for the West Park subdivision plat?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ron, it runs the length of West Park Drive. It's part of all of Kincaid Estates. It's minimal landscaping to run along West Park, because West Park is going to be a neighborhood collector. It's a significant street.
Follow-up question then, Mr. Barrett. As proposed, just to clarify, in the petitioner's application, the fence in its proposed location would that block that required landscaping from street view?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ron, it's close. It's difficult. It's impossible for me to tell, as not a surveyor, which is why we're asking for an updated as-built if the variance is approved, and that updated as-built will show both the fire hydrant and the existing trees.
Mr. Vig?
Mr. Barrett, I agree that the clear vision area may not be an issue with the proposed fence, but I wonder, did traffic engineering weigh in on this case? I didn't see anything in the packet from them.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, yes, they did. I spoke with them a couple of times regarding the clear vision. I don't see a letter, but I know I spoke with them, because those eight-and-a-half-by-eleven photographs from Google Earth, I printed out with traffic when we were trying to establish the edge of the right-of-way and the clear vision area. So yes, they've commented they're satisfied that it's clear.
And, thank you. Do you happen to know what the posted speed limit on West Park Drive is?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vig, I've been there twice, and I don't recall seeing the signs. As a collector, I'm going to assume that it's thirty and possibly forty, but I do not know for a fact.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, a follow-up to Mr. Ron's question. Can you repeat for me what the requirement, or where the requirement, where and what the requirement is for landscaping along West Park Drive is? Is that a plat note, or is that a condition of the homeowner's documents?
Mr. Chairman, I don't recall if it's in the homeowner's documents. I believe it is. It was a site plan requirement when Kincaid Estates Tracts One through Ten were approved.
And what, again, was that requirement, or what is that requirement?
The requirement, and I cannot recall the number of trees, but it was for a specified number of trees on each lot along West Park. It was a fairly minimal requirement, I believe. It was three or four trees per lot on the side of the lot facing West Park.
Because what, if I understand Mr. Ron's question, and I'll repeat it, I would, as a statement, it would seem that if we're putting a six-foot fence up on the property line, that would, that would screen any of the landscaping. If that landscaping is required to be on the property, it would screen that landscaping from the traveling public on West Park.
Mr. Chairman, there's that distinct possibility, but without the landscaping being shown on the as-built, we can't tell if it's in the easement on the property, the landscaping is in the easement on the property line, or actually in the right-of-way. So that's why if the variance is approved, we're going to want to see an as-built, and the landscaping had better be outside the fence.
Thank you. One other question on page, the plat is on page nineteen of the staff packet. Would all of the corner lot, would all of the lots that have West Park frontage, looks like there's one, two, three, four, are those all, do they all have the secondary front yard of West Park? So are they all required to, without a variance, have the ten-foot setback if a six-foot-high fence was to be installed?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. For all the corner lots, West Park, as a collector, is their secondary front yard, ten-foot setback.
And, and I believe you'd stated that there are no variances that have been granted, although there's one other fence that's installed illegally?
One is illegal. Two are six-foot, but they meet the ten-foot setback, so they didn't need variances.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Burkhart?
Just a note in response to Mr. Vig's question. On page twenty-seven of the packet, are, or no comment on the variance request from transportation planning staff, which, if you look at the heading, looks like it's part of the traffic department, so I don't know if they're using a different format to make their comments than what they've done previously, but it looks like the traffic department does, has commented on the case, and their comment was no comment.
Any other questions by staff?
No, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I did say staff. Any other questions by the board of staff? Not, could the applicant come forward, please? Could you state and spell your name for the record?
Okay. My name's Sue Lovkin. L-O-V-E-K-I-N.
Thank you, Ms. Lovkin. You have ten minutes for your presentation.
May I pass? I have some addendum to that seven standard to be passed to...
Sure, you can hand them in. We will need to keep those.
Oh, okay. I was going to give it to each one. Is that, as I go through?
Yeah, if you'll bring them right up to the front here, we'll record them.
I have present also Levi Williams. Okay, this is in response to the December second letter received from the municipality and bridge planning department zoning board of examiner appeals section. This is in response to application for zoning variance that I had submitted in November 2010. In my application for zoning variance, I have requested variance to the currently allowable heights for construction of a fence along a portion of my property from four feet to six feet. See attached application for zoning variance. The planning department, December second letter, informed me that my case had been scheduled to be heard by the municipal zoning board of examiner appeals on January thirteenth, 2011, today's date. The following's my response to the MOA seven variance standards. I guess I won't read each of the questions, but go ahead and jump into the regarding each standard number. As stated in my November fifth, 2010 letter, see attached, my request to construct a six-foot-tall fence along a portion of the northwest boundary of my property is not meant to address any exceptional or extraordinary physical circumstances with subject property. Rather, my request for variance is based upon my medically documented need for increased privacy in order to address my need for feeling safe and secure in my new home. This need for heightened privacy and security is supported through medical letters from doctors, was submitted to the municipality's planning department, and viewed at the time that I filed my application. However, because of the sensitive, private, and confidential nature of these reports, it precludes their being publicly displayed or presented today. The four-foot-height fence is not a sufficient height to provide me with a sense of security. At the time of construction, the builder was not aware of the four-foot-height restriction. Since the homes in West Park subdivision are required to be constructed with a minimum at least two thousand square feet in the neighborhood of Yukon Charlie and Keyne Fears Loop, I was required to change my home plans, launch to a split level in order to accommodate my current house. Even so, this change still require maximum use of available space at the ground level, making it unfeasible to build in a rectangular manner within the ten-foot easement area. Also, prior to the start of construction, a general drive-by or visual survey of the West Park subdivision showed that majority of homes built in the corner lot had a six-foot high fences, so there was little thought that this would present a problem on my property. The future projections show West Park Street likely to become a high-traffic area due to neighborhood park, elementary, middle school, and increased development of homes. Having the increased fence height at this specific location seems increasingly important to my well-being. At that time, the future safety and privacy concerns are increased due to high pedestrian traffic from the proposed school bus stop located across my home. Standard number two, A, I acknowledge and strongly believe that the strict application of this limiting code does create undue and exceptional hardship for individual condition. If denied the opportunity to construct a requested fence, I would be deprived of ability to feel safe and secure in my domicile. My home is a safety tree and sanctuary from the outside door. B, if the fence has to be built at the required yard setback distance of ten feet, I will have no usable yard space remaining. Additionally, with this limitation, my deck will need to be cut back, making it unusable for wheelchair turnabout, and difficult for individuals using a walker to safely maneuver within the available space. As observing the report, the other two adjacent corner homes with six-foot fence meet the setback, but all have rectangular-shaped lots with similar-sized homes, each with huge backyards. Of note is that one home, similar in size to the other home, but an adjacent lot, Fifty Ninety-One Keyne Fears, has a rectangular lot with a large backyard. My reason for pointing this out is to show that my request is not precedent setting, as another home in the same neighborhood has constructed a six-foot fence on easement, was approved by the West Park Homeowner Association Board, and that best thing I will also presume by the MOA. I submitted several photos as well, too, to the department. Standard number three, for me, the needs for the building of a six-foot fence on my property at the requested location was not done with the intent of skirting the existing ornaments, refraining the current requirement. It is that simply, in my observation and limited awareness, I could not foresee there being a problem with the construction, constructing the fence, especially when observing... the fence, especially when observing that majority of the other homes have already done so. At the time, I did not know that the angle of the lot and the need for changes in the home construction plans would create for me a dramatic impact on my ability to ensure my privacy and security. Standard number four, no impact is reasonably perceived to other property owners by granting a variation to the, to having a six-foot-high fence in lieu of a four-foot fence, considering that I have a corner lot, more of my home would be exposed to the public view than my adjacent neighbor with a shorter fence. The clear-vision area is not impacted. I am aware the fire hydrant would be outside of this, outside of the fence at three feet of clearance. The trees, four of them, along the inside of my easement would be transplant along easement per Greg Ramsey, White Raven Property Development. And as submitted his number, I spoke with him about it. I'm not asking to construct a six-foot fence from front to back on my property. The current length of the property is approximately one hundred and thirty-five feet. The stru, the construction of the six-foot fence will start approximately thirty to thirty-two feet back from the intersection or stops in. It will not impair the ability of the public to safely view the entire intersection as the triangular shape of my property presents an unobstructed angle view of the West Park Street traffic area. The fence in no way serves to obstruct views of drivers stopping at the intersection. Standard number five, this is not used variance, only dimensional zoning variances are permitted under the municipal zoning code. The same word is dimensional. This was described as essential peripheral in my request, which is to increase my fence height just sufficiently enough in order to help provide me with a sense of privacy, safety, and security to the, due to the projected high volume of vehicular and pedestrian traffic as described in number one. Contrary to a statement made in the planning department January thirteenth, two thousand and eleven response, part of the intent of the code is to prevent a walding appearance due to high fences at the lot line. The construction will request the fence will not act in this manner. Reason, construction of the fence would be angled from the front roadway to approximately thirty feet back on my property. This angle served to make the property, cannot serve to make the property box-like in appearance. As stated previously, most, as stated previously, most corner lot homes built on West Park currently have six-foot fence constructed in-size setback areas or at easement rooms. In my subjective opinion, many of these constructions currently present a walding effect as I drive by them. Accordingly, I have then wondered how the addition of addition, how the addition of one additional fence in my property will serve to produce a walding appearance. I do not believe that to be the case, and I feel that this opinion, if expressed by others, might also be subjective rather than based on factual conclusion. Standard six, in sincere estimation, when objectively analyzing the potential for harm for granting of this variance, I am unable to conceive of any adverse impact to the health, safety, or welfare of the people in the neighborhood or in Anglics itself. The people of Anglics will not suffer or be otherwise adversely affected or inconvenienced by granting of my variation request. Standard seven, again, I will reiter, reiterate my belief that the request variance for the fence to be six feet in height at specified location on my property is not excessive and is the minimum reasonable height needed to address the need for the protection of my privacy. In summary, I believe that approving my request to grant a variation for me to construct a six-foot fence in my backyard is overall a small accommodation request. The allowance of variation would help me in meeting the medical accommodation that I need. At this time, if I had known about the fence situation at the time that construction began in the home, then I would have made adjustment to the situation, as I had made construction to my current home to be totally handicap accessible. But, as the saying goes, ignorance, ignorance is bliss. So, in light of the existing situation, I'm asking this committee to allow for this accommodation to my situation, and please grant the requested variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lovekin. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Lovekin, when you were making changes to the site layout and location of the house, did you at that time know that you wanted to put up a fence on the property?
Not really, not at the time, because I presumed it was, uh, no, because I presumed that every, that most of the homes around the neighborhood, they all have six-foot fence. I didn't realize it was going to be a problem.
So, my question was, did you or did you not want to put up a fence when you were designing the location of the house?
Uh-huh.
You did.
Most homes have fences, so I, I guess it was just a assumption on my part.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions of the applicant?
By the board. Does staff have any questions of the applicant?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does the applicant have any questions of the staff on their presentation? Thank you. If not, if you'll have a seat, and we will open the, uh, hearing up for public testimony.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Could you, uh, state and spell your name for the record, please?
My name is Bill Taylor, B-I-L-L-T-A-Y-L-O-R, and I'm the president for West Park Homeowner Association.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. You have, uh, three minutes.
To answer your question, Mr. Chairman, the speed limit on West Park Drive is twenty-five miles an hour. The landscaping setback from the property line is six to seven feet where those trees must be planted. The, uh, landscaping plan is a master landscaping plan that West Park subdivision has with the municipality, set by the municipality, requires three-digi and one, uh, or correction, two spruce and one-digi tree along West Park Drive to maintain both sides all the way down West Park Drive, to include within the loops of West Park. Uh, Ms. Lovekin, I believe heard, say she did not, wasn't aware of the landscaping plans, the setbacks and everything. What I have here, and I can give it to you guys, she signed receipt of her homeowners' association back on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven, acknowledging receipt and understanding of this whole book of the association. She has submitted a request to the association before this public hearing ever came about. We gave her the option to comply with the setback, she refused to comply with it, we denied her, uh, request to build a six-foot fence. Uh, currently, all the other homeowners in West Park Drive, along West Park Drive, who have complied with the regulation, with the exception of the ones she mentioned, happened prior to the actual homeowners taking ownership of the association. Uh, I can't speak to that, as I don't know the circumstances surrounding it. But, that's all I have. You guys will like this.
Um, thank you, Mr. Taylor. You can, if you would like, you can leave that, we'll have to keep that for thirty days. Just, uh, Mr. Taylor, do you have a sec for a few questions?
Absolutely.
Um, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Taylor, so, to be clear, the homeowners' association is opposing this request?
Yes, sir.
And they've gone on record?
Yes, sir. We've got emails, well, we've sent her, we've sent her notices.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. Burkhart?
Could you clarify for me, so, the landscape easement is part of the right-of-way, or is it, does it affect the individual property owners and it's on their property?
That part, I'm not sure. She has asked, uh, White Raven to remove the trees. White Raven has not agreed to remove the trees. She has expressed that she will remove the trees herself. Uh, that came to the board as an issue. We have told her that she cannot remove the trees as they are required by the municipality, and we haven't heard anything other than we got a public notice of this hearing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vig?
Can you, can you speak to the, uh, the maintenance obligations of that landscaping? Does that, does that fall on the homeowners' association or the municipality, or do you?
The maintenance of the landscaping plan along West Park Drive is maintained by the homeowners' association. The dues, the dues that the homeowners pay, pay for the upkeep of those trees that she's wanting to remove to put her fence in, and the grass that's in the area, to keep it fertilized, watered, and trimmed, as well as the moose proofing.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, just, just for clarification again, um, sixth, the, the landscaping, um, area, do you have, is that in your homeowner's documents?
There's a small copy of it in our homeowners', uh, every book. This is the book that homeowners receive.
Uh-huh.
When they purchase a home within West Park Drive. They have so many days to review it, either sign that statement that I handed the panel here, that they concur with it, or they don't concur with it.
Okay, um, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Vig, do you have your, did you get your question answered, by the way?
Thank you.
Are there other questions of, um, Mr. Taylor by the board? Seeing, uh, seeing none, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Ms. Lovekin, you'll have time for rebuttal, uh, at the end. Hello, could you, uh, state and spell your name for the record, please?
Yes, uh, Lydia Milton, L-Y-D-I-A, Milton, M-I-L-T-O-N.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. Would you, you have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm, uh, live across the street from Ms. Lovekin, and, um, I don't want to appear unsympathetic to her medical issues, and she was gracious enough to come over and tell us that she was seeking the variance and stuff, and, and, um, I was a little bit surprised to hear about it not being an issue for traffic. We have a really high, high use. There's the Diamond High School ski team comes down there and skis literally on the road a lot, which, okay, that's probably not okay, but beside the point. There's, there's a lot of people using that area, specifically skiers and stuff, so we have a, a huge traffic area. And, um, I teach at one of the local middle schools, and I know that there's a middle school potentially coming across, so it concerns me that we're gonna have a lot of movement, and so, living right there on that corner and coming every day and looking, and it sweeps just like this. If you're sitting at the stop sign, you're sweeping this direction. And the place where her fence would come to, to the edge of the yard, and I'm not a transportation planner, but it concerns me, and I guess I would have the question for the staff of whether or not if they, if you allow the variance and the fence goes in, and that pushes back the landscaping in order to maintain the appearance of the, of the neighborhood, is that potentially gonna interfere with that vision around the corner? And that's something that I, I can't speak to, obviously, because I'm not an expert in that field. But, um, definitely, my, my biggest concern is, you know, one appearance of the neighborhood, we do get the book. My husband combed through that thing, and the realtor said, "Wow, you read the whole thing?" And he said, "Yeah, I wanna know what I'm getting into." And so, I do think it's important as a homeowner, if you're gonna buy into an association, that you maintain and, and, and really take a rigorous look at that and decide if you're willing to live with it. Um, because there's a lot of restrictions in those neighborhoods. So, um, you know, I would like to see the, the quality of that maintained. Um, it's something we bought into, but I'm, I'm, probably my key concern is, is the safety and welfare of the traffic, that, you know, people walking and the pedestrians, and the fact that there would be a park across the street, so a lot of people are gonna, you know, little kids rollerblading right across, you know, "Whee!", and then they go, and somebody's coming that direction, and they can't see around that sweeping corner because there's a fence there, and that's, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. Are there any, any questions of Ms. Milton by the board? Uh, Mr. Barrett, I, I believe, um, the, the plan as, as submitted does not affect the clear-vision triangle. There's no variance request, um, before us regarding that, correct?
Absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing, uh, no one, the public hearing is closed. Could, does staff have any further rebuttal?
Um, not rebuttal, Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment about the one neighbor who is in violation. I don't remember who said what at which time, um, and I'm not certain if, what the relationship with the homeowners' association is, uh, and that particular case, but, and regardless of when he purchased the property, or when the homeowners' association took control, that particular case is a violation of Title twenty-one, and it's on record. Just wanted that to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Um, Ms. Lovekin, you, you have time for rebuttal, if you'd like to come forward, come forward and speak into the microphone, please.
Okay. I wanna make the comment regarding, um, the president of the homeowner mentioning the landscape. It wasn't apparent to me that the trees along the property line, until I did the ASBelt, my builder did, and four of the trees are way inside the easement areas. And so, that's the reason we mentioned having them removed. And then Greg Ramsey mentioned that they will remove it this spring to transplant it outside of the easement lot. They weren't aware that it was inside. There's quite a few trees that are inside the easement line along the West Park. So, particularly on my property, there's four trees way inside the easement. So, that's the reason I mentioned, you know, if they would remove it, and he says they would, and they would transplant it along outside of the easement line. So...
Thank you.
Okay.
With that, the matter rest with the board. Could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? Mr. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, in case number two thousand and eleven dash zero zero three, I moved to grant a variance, um, in the R two A district to allow a six-foot-tall fence to be located approximately at the lot line, where the code requires either that the fence be four feet tall, or be located ten feet back from the lot line, uh, secondary front yard, according to, uh, department recommendations numbers one through five on pages eleven and twelve of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Uh, Ms. Denny, you've indicated you would second that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Um, Mr. Ron, would you speak to your motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I do not intend to support the motion. Uh, we'll walk through the, the seven standards. Um, standard number one, um, although staff found the standard is partially met based on the triangular shape of the lot, um, given the circumstances, um, I find that the standard is not met. Um, there is at least one other triangular-shaped lot, um, within this, uh, general area, and given no other physical circumstances affecting the lot, and the fact that there is a, uh, conforming alternative to place the fence in, in another location, I find that standard one is not met. Um, carry that logic through to standard two, and find that, uh, standard two is, is not met, uh, for the same reasons. I agree with staff on standard three, and that is not, uh, standard is not substantially met. Um, although the current owners didn't plot a reason on the property, um, they were, uh, involved from the beginning, or close to the beginning, in citing the house, um, making design recommendations that affected, um, ultimate, um, potential locations for the fence that they're now requesting. Um, I agree with staff that standard four is partially met. Uh, standard five, I, I find that it is, is not met, although, um, a fence at the property line will not, um, completely change the character of the zoning district. I believe that the potential to, uh, give a walding appearance, and as, um, described- I believe that the potential to give a walled-in appearance and, as described through public testimony, potentially create some safety hazards, I find that standard five is not met. Following through in standard six, I find that the standard is, although not substantially met, perhaps just met, impacts will be to the local neighborhood and not the greater municipality of Anchorage. I agree with staff in finding seven, and that is not substantially met. As noted, the fence could be set back somewhat and in a fully conforming location. Based on those reasons, I intend to not support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Ms. Denny.
I agree with Mr. Ron and with staff in that the seven standards have not been met. I do not plan to support the motion to approve. On standard number six, with the removal of the trees and moving them outside the fence, I believe that that will be an impact on the clear vision area in the future. Having the trees, when they finally do take root and grow out, that they will probably substantially impact the clear vision area if they're outside of that fence. So I do not plan to support the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Denny. Mr. Burkhart.
I guess I'd like to mention two items. I also don't plan on supporting the variance request. In regards to the clear vision triangle, if you turn to page five of the packet that shows the proposed six-foot fence, you see the 20-foot radius at the property corner there. Somebody has extended those lines, and I believe that that's the point of those extended lines, where you measure the 30 feet back for the clear vision triangle, so that would go an additional 10 feet approximately beyond where that curve begins. And so I agree with staff that I don't think there's a clear vision triangle problem, and if there was, that that would occur whether the fence was four feet or six feet. So, like I said, I don't have my code book, but I'm pretty sure that that's calculated in this case. I guess the other item I'd like to comment on is that if the homeowners association, I guess, owns and maintains those trees, it's really not the property owner's responsibility. It seems like they have rights to build a fence, and those are independent of where the homeowners association put the trees. And I think the homeowners association is probably free to move those wherever they want to, but if there's nothing on the plat on the individual property owner, they can't, in my mind, it doesn't seem like they have a right to put those on the property. So, in my mind, I'm divorcing the issue of where the landscaping is and just centering on the issue of the fence. And the property owner has the right to put a four-foot fence on the property line or a six-foot fence 10 feet back from that. And I think the homeowners association has to deal with, you know, whatever they want to do after that. But I agree with Mr. Ron in the basic issue of the case, that I don't think all seven standards are met, so I won't be supporting the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhart. Are there comments from other board members? Any other comments? Seeing none, please vote. That motion fails by a vote of zero to seven. So that variance has not been granted. Again, for the record, every final decision on the board shall clearly state, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face, it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. We're going to take a short five-minute break, and we'll be right back to hear our last case of sitting. Whose case is this? You ready? We're back in session for our last case of the evening. The case is 2011-006. The petitioner is Melinda Natanek. Melinda's, the petitioner's indicated she is present. Could staff provide us with the sufficiency of notice, please?
On December 22nd, 2010, there were 43 public hearing notices mailed to the area. At the time the report was written, no responses had been received, and no comments were received from the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. There are two late comments in support of the variance, and that is in a separate sheet that I believe it came with the packet, but in the separate sheet, there are two letters in support of granting the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Would you proceed with your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The petitioner is requesting a variance from the GR 2A yard setback requirement to allow a house to encroach 20 feet into the required 20-foot primary front yard setback. The house crosses the lot line and encroaches into the right-of-way. If the variance for the house is approved by the board tonight, then the petitioner will need to obtain, apply for and obtain a right-of-way encroachment permit for the encroachment into the right-of-way. There is a storage shed, which is labeled a cabin on the as-built. The petitioner has stated that she will move the storage shed to a conforming location. She's not seeking a variance for the storage shed. The 20-foot primary front yard faces Annex Circle. The 10-foot secondary front yard joins Crow Creek Road, and the 10-foot side yard setback abuts Lot Two. Actually, we can, if the board could flip to page seven, page seven is an as-built of the property. You can see that it's a corner lot. It's a triangular-shaped lot. It shows the location of the house, and the encroachment also shows the road, where the road is built. Page 10 of the packet is, I thought that I had labeled this, but apparently I had labeled the wrong one, the one that's in our file and not the one that went to the board. On page 10, everything that's black is avalanche hazard zone, and then the gray, everywhere that's not black essentially, is normal. The light color is normal, and the dark color is avalanche hazard. Page 18 of the packet shows an aerial, pretty good aerial photo. You can see the petition site is the triangular lot. You can see the location of the house in relation to the lot line. You can see where the road is built. I'm not certain that this is completely accurate. Sometimes the aerial photos are shifted a little bit from the streets, but it looks pretty accurate. Page 33 shows 32 and 33, were taken by staff. This is a picture of the house from different angles. So one is from the street. Well, all three are from the street, but the first one on page 32 is from the street, you know, approximately right straight across from the street to the house. Then there's a view from a little bit lower than the house on the street, and then a view from above the house from the street on page 33. Finally, page 34 is the code enforcement officer's report. There was a code enforcement officer who was passing through the area, looking for issues, and discovered the encroachment by, that's the subject of this request. The lot was platted in, let's see. The lot was platted 1966, prior to its current GR 2A zoning. The lot contains 30,466 square feet. The minimum required lot area for this lot with onsite septic system in the GR 2A is 50,000 square feet. Hence, the lot is smaller than the minimum required lot area by almost 20,000 square feet. The subject property does not have access to public water or sewer. The property is permitted for an outhouse, and the owner hauls her own fresh water. The requested variance is for the house only. The house was built in 2005 without a land use permit and therefore is ineligible for non-conforming rights or grandfather rights. The house was discovered by a code enforcement officer, and the owner subsequently applied for a land use permit in July of this past summer. There are no topography maps of the petition site or the surrounding area. The site lies within an avalanche hazard zone. The planning division finds that standard one is not met. The lot does not have exceptional physical circumstances that are different from other lots in the area. The petition site slopes downhill to the north. This is an avalanche hazard zone. The subject property is oddly shaped. It's triangular, and it's a corner lot. Other corner lots in the area, however, have similar slopes. The lot has approximately 20,000 square feet less than the minimum required lot area in the GR 2A district for lots with onsite systems. The buildable area on the lot is not constrained by an onsite system, since there is none. It's an outhouse. The lot is served by an outhouse, and the owner hauls water. Standard two is not met. The house can be built on the lot outside of the required yard setbacks. The physical constraints of the land do not constitute an exceptional hardship on the property owner that would deprive her of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. None of the issues related to the land necessitate building the house within the required yard setback. Standard number three is not met. This is a physical condition, there is a physical condition of the lot arising from the slope. However, the slope is not particular to this lot, and the slope cannot be reasonably related to the need for the variance. The need for the variance is a result of the actions the applicant, had the petitioner obtained a land use permit prior to building the house, then there would be no need for this variance. Standard number four is partially met. There have been no objections from the neighborhood. The private development division is concerned, the municipal agency, is concerned about the granting of the variance. The private development division comments, quote, "The existing private improvements encroaching into the right-of-way have impacted existing roadways, municipal snow removal operations, utilities, or drainage. All Annex Circle public improvements in the right-of-way are in non-standard locations in order to accommodate these private encroachments. In the event the public improvements require upgrades or reconstruction, the petitioner should be required to bear an extraordinary project cost associated with encroachment, accommodations, and privileges." Now, that may be more of a general statement from the project management engineering division or private development division, because there, you know, I'm not sure what public, you know, public amenities are available in this part of Girdwood, in this part of the valley. Currently, the owner and her neighbors built the road, maintained the roads in this area, removed snow, those sorts of things. I don't believe the municipality is doing any of that work. Standard number five is met. The requested variance is dimensional and not a use variance. The location of the house will not change the character of the zoning district. Standard six is met. There are no structure separation violations. There are no identified health or safety issues. Standard number seven, the planning division believes is not met. The requested variance is not the minimum variance needed for reasonable use of the land. The petitioner's requested 100% encroachment into the primary front yard setback. Had the owner obtained a land use permit, then the house would have been built in a conforming location. The recommendation from the planning division is for denial of the variance, because standards one, two, three, four, and seven are not substantially met. If after the public hearing, the board establishes findings that the standards are substantially met to allow the variance, then they should be subject to conditions one through four on page six of the packet. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the city doesn't, what services does the city provide up there? Do you know?
I don't believe they're providing any. This is a lot where the owner, I believe she built the road, she maintains the road, she and her neighbors, from about the old mine site on Crow Creek Road for several miles to this site. I don't believe the muni built, I'm sorry, I believe that this is within the DOT responsibility. However, they don't maintain past that Crow Creek Mine, sort of the tourist spot, I think. Also, there's no public water or sewer available. The owner has an outhouse and hauls water. I guess maybe the petitioner could speak to whatever amenities she receives from the public, such as electricity or something. I'm not sure.
Do you know when the house was built?
I believe I have that information, but I think the owner could also speak to that because there existed sort of a cabin, and then in addition was made to the cabin, sort of a loft house, and then there was, I think, an enlargement done. But I apologize if you could ask the owner when the house was built.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? If not, could the applicant come forward, please? And can you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Melinda Natanek, M.A.L.I.N.D.A.N.A.T.A.N.E.K.
Thank you, Ms. Natanek. You have 10 minutes for your presentation.
Okay. Starting with standard number one, as far as the property not having physical circumstances, it is known that there was an avalanche that went through the eastern portion of my lot about 15 years ago now, went through Lot One and then Lot Two that I'm abutted against, which is why I'm hugging the western corner of my lot. I also have lots of runoff during breakup where water does flow through my lot. And then as far as not being constrained by an onsite septic system, while I don't have a septic system, I am still held to constraints of an outhouse, which, again, you have to be 100 feet from water just to have a vaulted privy placed as well. As for standard two, again, with the previous avalanche that had went through the lot along with the water constraints that limited my ability where to build, there's also two culverts that were placed when I built Annex Circle. I had asked the municipality to build it, which they told me they would not build it. So I constructed Annex Circle, and there are two culverts underneath Annex Circle that run parallel and drain onto my lot, which, again, have limited the building potential. For standard three, again, we're looking at the avalanche and the drain off that comes through in the springtime. I did obtain a driveway permit from the state when I constructed Annex Circle. The municipality, it was, I don't know, it was very difficult. I tried to get a building permit, was told I could not get a building permit because I didn't have a viable septic system. I initially started with a compost toilet, which I tried to get approved. They would not approve a compost toilet as a viable septic. When I constructed Annex Circle, that was coming off of Crow Creek Road, which is a state road, so I had to get their approval as well. They approved it as a driveway permit, which I have. I believe that was finalized in 2006. So I worked with them on that. Again, when I would talk to the municipality about building Annex Circle, I was told if they built Annex Circle, that would put them at risk if I was injured or killed in an avalanche, so they will not develop it. So, there's that. Standard four, I do have letters from four of the neighbors that actually live there. There's two vacant lots. One was recently sold, so I weren't able to contact them. And the other vacant lot, I did not hear from, but I do have letters from four homeowners And the other vacant lot, I did not hear from, but I do have letters from four homeowners that are not objecting to this. Again, as far as the concerns about the municipality, they do not provide any services back there. The state does not plow Crow Creek Road. We have formed a road association. There's about 35 homes back there in Raven Mountain Estates. We each pay $300 a year to have the five miles of Crow Creek Road plowed in the winter, basically plowed mainly by us, the private homeowners, and then we can, through the money of the $300 we all provide, we can also call in people with bigger equipment to plow us out. I plow Annex Circle. My neighbors help financially, just giving me gas money and that to plow Annex Circle. There are no utilities back there. We all function on generators or solar wind. Again, there's no water drainage issues. You know, again, this is all kind of up to the homeowners to do, so I built Annex Circle. We put in, actually put three culverts in to allow for the drainage going down. Two of them run parallel and drain into my lot. I also did meet with the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. They are not opposed to this. However, I have to meet with them again on Monday before they would give me a letter because they wanted confirmation of my letters from the neighbors. So, that delayed that. And then, again, Five and Six were met. Again, with Seven, you know, I'm aware that I did not get the building permit. Again, I argued with them for probably a year on the compost toilet and then they would not approve the compost toilet. I tried to get a septic, that was not approved either, so now I'm first to put in the vaulted privy. So, as far as, you know, I do need the 100%, I'm not able to move the house, you know, just a foot, won't. When I looked at moving the entire structure, you know, it's gonna, I'm gonna have to build an entire another foundation, so it's not possible for me to move it over just a couple feet, because we'll have to build a new foundation and move it onto that, is what I was told. So, I guess I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Natanek. Are there questions of the applicant by the board? Mr. Fink.
Chairman. It is Natanek, did I say that correctly?
Natanek.
When did you build the house?
It was in September of 2005, and I actually did not build it. I had a 12 by 24 structure that we moved onto it and then it was finished from there.
Did you build a foundation that you put it on?
Yeah. Yeah, just the foundation, I guess. And then, I believe in 2007, it was added on to, I think, 2007.
Did you apply, and you didn't apply for a building permit at that time?
When I, in September of '05, I went to the municipality and they would not let me apply for a building permit because I didn't have a septic, so they told me I couldn't apply, because I had the compost toilet and they said, "No, you can't apply for a building permit without a," I was told I had to have the septic permit first. So, I was denied application.
And you've been unable to get a septic permit?
I have, so I've now, I just got a vaulted privy permit. They wouldn't approve the compost toilet, so then I tried just to get full septic placed in and I could not get, with the water that flows on the lot, I could not get approval for that. So, I finally found a place on the lot where we could put a privy and that was approved. That was approved this fall.
Thank you.
Ms. Danning.
Yes, Ms. Natanek, you say you built Annex Circle?
Yes.
And you built the house or put the house on the lot?
Well, I, let me, I guess I hired someone to build Annex Circle, yes.
Okay. Then, how did you end up with the house on the lot line and not?
The lot, when I purchased it, it was a cash price. It was a cash purchase. It was previously surveyed, so we went off of the markers that were, that we could, it was clearly marked. So, the gentleman that constructed Annex Circle, which, according to the state, is my driveway, we were able to identify the markers and we put the house based on where the markers were, keeping in mind that I wanted to keep it close to the western side based on the historical avalanche on the eastern.
So, you had it surveyed, but you still?
No, it was surveyed by the previous owner.
Right. And so, you went off the previous owner's survey markings?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there other questions of the applicant by the board? I do have a question. You mentioned you got permitted for a privy, for an outhouse. Is that through onsite services as well? They issued that permit?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess this is my question for staff. I'm not aware with the typical building permit submittal, is there something that precludes a person, if they aren't permitted for a septic, are you aware of, is there, are there special processes that have to go, have to be followed through to obtain such a permit?
Through the chair, I'm afraid I'm no help to this question. I, this is new information this evening. I was not aware of that, that for this case, a land use permit was for building a house was denied because, because there wasn't an approved onsite well and, I'm sorry, onsite septic system and private well. This is the first time I've encountered this question and I didn't know about it until the petitioner brought it up now.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions of the applicant by any of the board members? Does staff have any questions of the applicant? Mr. McGlaughlin? Do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, Mr. Chair.
Does the applicant have any questions of staff based on their presentation?
No, at this time.
All right. Well, if you'll, you could probably step to the side and we'll have a very brief. Mr. Fink, did you have another question?
One more question for the applicant. You said two of the culverts drain onto your property?
Yes.
Where do they, where does the water come out?
One behind the house and one in front of the house. The one behind the house splits between myself and my storage shed, about halfway, kind of, I guess you don't have a picture of that.
If we're looking at page seven, can you tell us?
Do you look at, which page?
Page seven.
Page seven. Page seven, I would say about halfway down from the cabin before you hit my house is where one of the culverts goes and drains out that way. It goes behind the house, behind the shed, and then kind of curves down and runs down into Crow Creek from that. And then the second culvert is located in front of the house and maybe about 10 to 20 feet in front of the propane tank. I'm not real good with figures. And again, that one comes across and runs there. There's actually a small little pond there in front of the propane tank and then it also drains down into the ditch of Crow Creek Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quickly, is there anyone from the public wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Does staff have any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chair.
Does Mr. Burkhardt have a question?
I have a question for, for staff. If this variance is granted, has there been any discussion in terms of the likelihood of that encroachment permit being granted? And maybe you can't speculate on that, but I guess you, would be, since that, that piece of land isn't maintained by the city in any respect, have they weighed in on this issue yet at all or?
It's an appropriate question. The, staff asked Right-of-Way Division if a, an encroachment permit would be granted for the house should the variance be granted, and they declined to answer that question. They weren't willing to answer it. If I were to take a wild guess or a guesstimate, I think that they, they probably will grant an annual, an annual or temporary encroachment permit. Their comments, their agency comments are found on page, on page 16 and 17 of the packet down at the bottom. You can read Right-of-Way's comments. They're, they're sort of harsh. They object to the, their office objects to the granting of the variance, but I would guess that they, they would grant the encroachment permit should the, should the variance be granted.
Okay. Thank you.
Does the applicant have any final rebuttal?
Yes. One thing I forgot to mention is when we did look at for future development back there on Annex Circle, there is no foreseeable development of any kind that the municipality plans to do any time in the foreseeable future. So, my road is probably one of the most developed of the roads that are back there. Some of them that they have listed as roads don't even exist. So, again, I don't feel that there's any development that'll be occurring in any time in the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Natanek. Mr. Burkhardt, did you?
I've got a question for the petitioner. I guess, what are your plans for the property? I guess, I guess if, maybe that partly depends on if we grant the variance and if you get the encroachment permit, but if the encroachment permit is something that needs to be renewed annually, I'm not sure if you're ever going to be able to sell this house or?
I have no plans to sell.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
I believe with that, the matter rests with the board. Could I have a positive motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the staff a question?
Hish me, Mr. Fink.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, regardless of what we do here, because the encroachment permit has to be granted annually, if the municipality decides to develop up there or widen the road or what have you, I mean, they can just deny the permit and the structure's gone.
Through the chair, Mr. Fink. Yes, that's correct. I think, I believe that the way, the Right-of-Way Division acts is for encroachments into the right-of-way, which do occur, say a fence or something, they will review it and based on their own set of standards, if they believe that a temporary encroachment permit is warranted, they'll grant it for a small fee and they'll update it annually with the caveat that they can take it away at any time. I think that with a fence or something like that, they'll grant something, you know, grant a, an encroachment permit and should a walkway be built or something and a fence need to be taken down, then they can yank the permit away. For a house, I think that, they could, they could do that, but yank the permit and the house would have to be removed. But I think practically, doubtful that a bureaucrat would, would, would say, "No, yank the permit and move your house to," I, I think that what would happen is that whatever road building or services would just have to be built to the far side of the right-of-way area. Now, the right-of-way, I believe, is 60 feet across the platted right-of-way. The built right-of-way is, the built street, the actual built street is within that 60 feet, right? And our standard streets do not, so what I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make is that when, when, when there's a residential subdivision, the minimum street width is 60 feet. The minimum right-of-way width is 60 feet, but actual built streets are less than 60 feet. And so, they will move that street to the right or to the left. They try to keep it on the center line of the right-of-way, but they will, they will move it in order to avoid things such as, you know, houses. But there is topography here. That's why the, the standard requires more right-of-way than actually is needed for topography and those sorts of things.
Mr. Burkhardt, did you have another question?
Yeah, one last question for staff here. Occasionally, we have buildings that are built across property lines or fences that are built into the right-of-way. So, technically, remind me if I'm correct, that we're dealing with the portion of the building, the only part under our purview is really what's on the private lot here and what is in the right-of-way we have no power over. And conceivably, if we allowed this variance and they, they said no for an encroachment permit, the property owner could take a chainsaw to their house and remove the portion in the right-of-way and what would be remaining would be perfectly legal if we, we pass this variance. But we have no jurisdiction over what happens in the right-of-way whatsoever, correct?
That's correct. The subject of the seven standards of approval, seven criteria, are the question of, should there be a 20-foot encroachment into the 20-foot front yard setback? That's the question before the board. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the matter rests with the board. For case 2011-006, could I have a positive motion from a board member, please? Mr. Ron.
Mr. Burkhardt, I'm going to put you on the spot. Isn't this your last opportunity to put a motion before the board? And if he wants to get out of here this evening. Mr. Burkhardt?
Hold on.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. In case 2011-006, I move we grant a variance from AMC 21.09.060.B, 0.1 to allow a house to encroach 20 feet, 100% into the required 20-foot primary front yard setback. Subject to conditions, one, two, three, and four on page six.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Mr. Fink, you've indicated you would second the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Mr. Burkhardt?
I don't think I intend on supporting the variance request. In terms of findings of fact, I disagree with staff in that I think Standard One is met. This lot is a double frontage lot, triangular in shape, so I think it's atypical in terms of the other lots in the area. So, even though the other lots in the area are also slope affected and that's not particular to this lot, the configuration of the lot and the two-sided frontage, I think, indicates that Standard One is met. I don't think Standard Two is met. There are conforming locations upon the lot for the, the house to be located. And even if I'm looking on the asphalt on page seven, the petitioner has testified that the avalanche danger increases if you move the, the house to the east, but there are conforming locations with, without moving it to the east if you move it to the south, approximately near where the, the cabin that's to be moved or what's marked on the asphalt as the cabin. So, I think there, there are conforming locations on the lot, so I don't think the strict application of the code would, would pose an undue hardship and so, I think there is a conforming location for the house. I don't believe Standard Three is met. I think this hardship is self-imposed. Even though the petitioner has had some disagreements with the city in terms of septic and other applications that she has made, there still is a requirement for a land use permit to be applied for, so I think she proceeded at her own risk. I agree with staff that Standard Four is at least partially met. We have those letters of non-objection from adjacent property owners, the testimony that the, the Girdwood, the Girdwood Board was waiting for that information, that the petitioner and the... indicated that they verbally had no objection. So I think standard four is at least partially met. I believe standard five is met, that this isn't a use variance. I agree with staff that standard six is met, but I, I don't believe standard seven is met, that the reasonable use of the land comes with putting a house on the lot, and I think there are conforming locations. So I don't intend on supporting the variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Uh, Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with Mr. Burkhardt on standard one, that that standard is met for the reasons he stated. On standard two, um, and I guess I'd be adding to my comments on standard one as well. I mean, we've had testimony that there have been avalanches on the east side of the property, and that that was the only, or the safest location on the property, given the history of avalanches. We don't have any testimony to the contrary. I'm going to take her at her word. If history shows that's the dangerous part of the lot, and, and I think that standard would be met. She put it in the most safe position she could. I mean, the whole lot's subject to avalanches, but the other parts of the lot have a history of that. In addition, she, you know, she's got the culvert she's got to work around. So I think standard two is met. She's fairly limited in where she can put the, her house. Number three, for those same reasons, I don't think this is a self-imposed hardship. Again, I think she's very limited. There is history. They know the history. It's a tight community down there. I think that was the safest place to put the cabin. She lives there. She, she knows the area. In fact, she developed the area. So I'm going to trust, trust her testimony on that. I agree with staff on four, five, and six. And on standard seven, I, I believe it's met. Shy of taking the, the chainsaws Mr. Burkhardt discussed and, and taking, you know, part of the house off, well, I'm not going to address that, that goes under the right-of-way. Just in terms of the variance, um, very limited with this lot, given it's an avalanche area, given she's got two culverts on the lot, given the limitations with her outhouse, I mean, they won't grant her a septic permit. I think that where the house is, is probably the minimum variance that would make a reasonable use of that land. So I believe all seven standards are met, and I intend on supporting the motion. You know, I guess also, no harm, no foul. I mean, it is a tight community down there. They, they get together and they pool their money and plow the roads. They, they made the road, and I don't see that denying the variance serves any public purpose, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Um, are there any other comments from any of the board members? Mr. Ron?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps just to carry this on a little bit longer, uh, to help me out here, I'm, I'm a little torn on, on where I stand. Mr. Fink, thank you for your comments, and, and they do weigh in my ultimate decision. As far as conforming locations on the lot, Mr. Burkhardt, I, I can find agreement there that there do appear to be some conforming locations closer to, to the shed. I'd like to point out for the record, Mr. Wild's comments about the avalanche rating for the property and, and his, um, opinion that the west of the property, in fact, rather than the east, is the preferred, excuse me, reverse that, further the highest danger from an avalanche is from the west, not the east. Regarding standard number seven, um, a minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of the land. The petitioner has put a very reasonably sized house on the lot in a location that appeared to be of greatest access and ease, given the physical circumstances. So I, I can find that standard seven was perhaps met. What I'm, I guess still struggling with is, is, uh, standard two perhaps, so if anyone could, um, assist with that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I, I will speak to the motion, and I, I don't know that I'll, I'll speak to standard two, unfortunately, Mr. Ron, but I, I do not intend to support the motion. Agreeing with Mr. Burkhardt, and specifically that standards three, four, and, and seven are not met. While I, I, the, the petitioner seems like a very nice person, and, and I, you know, I know we're all struggling to try and, try and help her out as much as we can, the, the fact is, if a survey had been done, this building would have been situated, um, if a building permit was acquired and the survey was done, this building could have been situated in a conforming location. So for that reason, I, I find that the standard three is not met. Standard four, I, I don't feel is met. We, we have comments from private development. We also have comments from street maintenance, both opposing, um, the granting of this variance and, and also stating their, their reasons for that. So I don't, don't feel that's, that standard's met. Regarding standard seven, um, I, I don't feel that this is the, the minimum variance. There may be other avenues that the, the petitioner could, could look at, possibly replating Annex Circle, the right-of-way, to shift that to the, further to the west, to, um, keep the property, keep the, the building in its current location and still providing the setbacks. Those are, those are options that, that if this variance, you know, is not granted, that the petitioner could, could possibly look at. But I think that the fact is, we're trying to, um, you know, jump through a lot of hoops here when, when this is a pretty significant, uh, encroachment into the, the permit, or into the setback, and, you know, the most, the most affected adjacent property owner being the, um, the right-of-way, the private development and, um, right-of-way oppose the, the granting of the variance. So for those reasons, I do not intend to support the motion. Uh, Mr. McGlaughlin?
Uh, point of information for the board, just in case, if, if the variance was, uh, denied and there were an appeal, plating is not an option for, for this. The minimum right-of-way is 60 feet. There's a, I believe there's 60 feet with this right-of-way, but plating is just not an option. I just want to, point of information, so that that is not a finding for, uh, denial of the, uh, denial of the variance.
Um, that's fine, but why couldn't the right-of-way be shifted? Why isn't plating an option?
Uh, good question. So I, I, I review plaits for subdivisions, and to replat the right-of-way would require the neighbor across the street to give up ri, to voluntarily give up right-of-way, uh, well, all of the lots along there. For the right-of-way to be shifted out some amount of space, it would have to come from the neighbors on the other side of the street, and, uh, plating is a very expensive, I mean, it may be $15,000 for plating, and, and, and it may cause an encroachment on the other side with those neighbors. I, it's just, doesn't appear to be a viable option.
I'll, I'll, I'll disagree with you there, Mr. McGlaughlin. I think it is an option, and, um, that being said, um, one way or another, I, I, they can, the property owners can get together, they get together all the time to replat, and, um, that's not the basis for my denying this, this variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But I think there are other, are, are avenues available. So I do not intend to support the motion. Mr. Fink?
Just to comment with regard to, uh, the comments from private development, you know, they, they state existing private improvements encroaching in the right-of-way are impacting existing roadways, municipal snow remover operations, utilities drainage, they don't do any of that. So I, I guess I find it a bit gratuitous. I mean, they don't-
They don't do any of it right now, but, you know, we are a growing community. The right-of-way's established, this building location is established, and if and when that right-of-way is ever going to be improved, private development projects are improved by adjacent property owners, so to request the city to build the road, they aren't going to do it unless there was a road improvement district that was formed where the adjacent property owners participated. If that was going to occur, the road would be built to municipal standards, which would be to try to center it in the road, um, it centered in the right-of-way. And this location of this building is then an impact to the design of a roadway for any future snow storage, if, for, for snow storage, for placement of utilities. You know, we're, we're looking at variances right now from structures that were built 50, 70 years ago as the community has built, you know, at the time, they were probably in situations similar to this, where there wasn't, uh, uh, street maintenance, there weren't a lot of improvements, but with time, the development caught up. So, um, I, I agree right now, the, the city does not do the maintenance, um, the Gourdwood Board of Supervisors doesn't do the maintenance, but, um, down the road, um, someone will be doing that maintenance, and this placement of this building will have an impact on, on those costs.
And I guess my only response would be the, the encroachment into the right-of-way would have to be, be approved annually, and I don't, I don't foresee that happening in the, in the foreseeable future in that area of Gourdwood, and I don't know how long the structure's going to, to exist, but I can't see that for 20 or 30 years. Um, and again, the right-of-way encroachment would have to be approved, approved annually.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Are there any other comments by any of the board members? Seeing none, uh, please vote. That motion fails by a vote of three, four, and four against the, the variance. Uh, again, for the record, every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. That concludes our public hearings for the evening. For our reports, I, I do not have anything to report. Mr. Barrett, do you have anything to report to us?
Mr. Chairman, the hunt continues for replacement members. If you have names, please forward them, we'll get them over to the mayor's office and try and get this thing cranked up. Mr. Weaver has promised he would speak to the mayor.
Do you know who is in charge, is, is Jackson still in charge of tapping the boards?
Jay Jackson is still taking the lead on that.
Okay.
So I, I got one person to, to volunteer, but it sounds like the, the mayor's office hasn't taken anybody to the assembly, including, um, Mr. Ron, who, um, is, I believe, willing to, to serve another term, that if 120 days pass, then he won't be eligible to, to serve either.
I haven't been keeping track. Are we nearing 120 days already?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ron, you'll be able to attend the February meeting. The day after that is the 120th day. And we got you for another month.
And I guess I agreed to come back next month, so maybe I shouldn't have done the findings of fact on that last case, so, um, if somebody isn't approved by the assembly in the meantime, I'll probably be one last time here on beginning of February. And that might be your last time, too, if the mayor's office doesn't get their acting gear.
Then you can return the favor, Mr. Burkhardt. How does, uh, next month look, Mr. Barrett?
Just two cases, Mr. Chairman. A lot percentage coverage variance, and Saints Preservus, another fence height variance.
Okay. Very well, are there any other comments by any board members? Not, Ms. Williams?
Yes, I actually won't be here next month. I have a wedding to attend out of town, so I'll be spending a few days in the sunshine. Sorry.
Oh, good for you, yeah, I feel for you. Mr. Ron?
Uh, request clarification again. Is it the planning department or planning division? I noticed Mr. McGlaughlin was catching himself a few times there. How should we refer to you, Mr. Barrett?
All right, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ron, don't go to the website, because that won't help you. We are the Department of Community Development. That's half the building with Jerry Weaver over it. Then there is the Planning Division. We are the Plating and Zoning Section. Isn't bureaucracy wonderful?
I thought we were the current planning section. Did that change?
Oh, maybe we are.
The current planning section?
Current planning as opposed to long-range planning, which is the physical planning. I've got it written down. I have to refer to it every day.
Sorry I asked.
And I'll, I'll make one comment, too, is, is that I have requested org charts for the commissions, but they don't even have that finalized yet where we could, I mean, it's been approved, but it hasn't been signed off and stuff, and so we can't, we don't have anything to give you that would say what you had, but we'll get there eventually.
Any other comments? If not, we're adjourned.